Everyone, it is one o'clock. Thank you for coming out. My name is Brendan Porter. I'm the Special Assistant to the Administrator here in the municipality of Norristown. And with me today is Mary Anne Nangle with our Finance Department. So this is one of the public hearing meetings for our 2019 proposed budget. So essentially, what's going to happen today? We're going to run through the presentation with all the numbers. I do ask that if you have any questions, please hold them to the end, after which have you to answer any kind of budget-related questions. And if anyone has comments to provide, we will transcribe them and we will provide them to council leader tonight at their meeting at 6:00 P.M. So this is a little bit of an overview as to what we have done and where we have yet to go. We did have our first budget workshop, which focused primarily on expenditures on October 27th, followed by a second workshop focused primarily on graduates on November 26th. This is the third of three public meetings that have been available to the public. First two being on November 28th at 1:00 P.M. and 6:00 P.M. And this is the third meeting on November 29th at 1:00 P.M. After this, there will be a special meeting through council to be presented with the full budget, after which there will be a 10-day public commentary. Hard copies and digital copies of the full budget proposal will be made available online and at the library and here at Municipal Hall. And then the public will have 10 days to provide feedback. They can call the municipal office, they can stop by Municipal Hall, they can send an email to info@norristown, or they could be developing a survey online if people choose to. So you can come a person, you can call, you can send a letter, and you can put an email as well as submit a digital survey. So a multitude of ways that the public can comment once the full presentation is available on November 30th. Following that, on December 10th, there will be a special meeting for council to motion to advertise. And should that motion pass, we are looking at a potential adoption on December 18th at their regularly scheduled workshop meeting. All right, with that, this is an overall budget trend for expenditures by the municipality from 2013 to our preliminary budget for 2019. Overall, we're seeing about a 1.7% increase over last year, which totals $569,827.15. Now, this number is lower than our initial preliminary. In October, we did present a higher number, but we were able to lower that budget estimate for 2019 by $200,000. And again, that also shows the mileage history for the municipality. As you can see, 2013 mileage rate was 12.36. 14, there was a mileage increase to 12.7, which remained steady until 2018 where there was a 2.0 increase. Here we have a snapshot of what the budget will be for 2019 should it be accepted, with percentages for each department. As you can see, police is the largest slice of pie. Police department, it takes about a quarter of the overall budget, followed by debt service, public works, insurance and pension payments, and fire, as well as administrative overhead, which includes health, dental, vision, and a few other categories. And again, total preliminary budget for 2019 is $34,436,455.51. This is a look at the snapshot between the differences between 2018 and 2019. Couple things to stand out is a 16% decrease in recreation spending. Now, that number is kind of off-put because that's not additional spending, that's just a transfer of utility payments. Previous in 2018, utilities were paid for primarily out of public works, but with the acquisition of the currently being renovated rec center, the utilities for that ability will now fall within the recreation budget. In addition to that, we see a little 9% increase in code enforcement. That is primarily for an increase in terms of property payment. Code has put in a proposal to increase their spending for the property payment services. Other than that, we see an increase in public works and insurance payments. And totaling a $500,000 increase over last year. We did see some decreases in terms of executive contributions, which is primarily the council spending and contributions to civic organizations. Although I can say that civic organization contribution did not lower. A $2,000 decrease is primarily in terms of council spending.
I didn't hear that.
The $2,000 decrease in executive is primarily from the council budget. And the $40,000 decrease in the fire department is primarily due to, I believe that they downed the fire department obviously. Now, this breaks down that $500,000 increase into different categories. So broken down, broken down into three categories. So that $500,000 increase can be broken down into personnel costs, operational costs, and an increase to insurance costs. Personnel cost is the biggest chunk of that increase, with, as you can see down there, 58% of that personnel cost being contractual obligations in terms of unionized salary increases that are part of the labor expenses. And in terms of operational costs, we can see fire operations have increased 10%. That's primarily to do some replacement of equipment in terms of the radios. Code enforcement operations, again, that's the property payment services that they want to do a little bit more in 2019. Public work operations is primarily an increase in, I believe it's stormwater system maintenance and operation fees there. Recreation operations increased, again, 7%. Most of that, again, is utilities, transferring the utilities from the rec center to public works to recreation. And the public department operations is primarily financed in terms of banking services, costs, and other financial costs that we incur in that municipality. So going through expenditures to revenue, our projected revenue for 2019 is $32.7 million. That is a $1.1 million decrease from last year. And as you can see, we have a revenue trend from 2016 to 2019. And our anticipated deficit, looking at expenditures versus revenues, is about $1.7 million. Here's breakdown of the revenues that we are anticipating for next year. Primarily tax revenue is our primary focus in terms of what we generate. 39% being property taxes, 35% being local community taxes, which is business privilege and income tax. And we have different other revenue categories that include grants, fees that we charge for permits for the meters that are out on the streets, and in terms of our grant program. And just like with expenditures or revenues, this is a comparison between what was adopted last year and what we are anticipating for next year. We do anticipate a couple decreases, non-business permits in terms of public work permits, in terms of street openings and utility pole installations. Fines and permits, mostly a decrease in terms of parking violations and revenues that we get from tickets that go onto the magistrate's office. Another decrease is in terms of culture and recreation. There was about an $8,000 decrease in terms of what we can anticipate for next year. With that being said, we are looking at different avenues for generating additional revenue that we will go into a little bit more detail. The first we're looking at is a pilot program, which is payment due taxes. And these are voluntary payments that tax-exempt properties provide the municipality for municipal services. For any nonprofit that is in town, they do benefit from fire service and police service, and they don't pay taxes. So pilot is a way for those entities to contribute to offset the council services. And here is some estimates and some figures. There are about 256 tax-exempt properties that are not municipal properties. Of course, some of them are owned by the county and some of them are owned by the school district. But a big chunk of them, 229, are just non-tax exempt tax-exempt properties. Their assessed value totals over $85 million. And were they to be taxed properties, that's $1.2 million in revenue that they would have been generating if they were tax-exempt. That's just information to provide in terms of revenue that we are not capturing because they are tax-exempt.
Can you speak up, please?
Yes, ma'am. So we have 229 tax-exempt properties that are not tax-exempt bodies in town. Their total assessed value of all those properties are over $85 million. And were they taxed, taxed properties, that's $1.2 million in tax revenue that would have been generated if they were tax-exempt properties. So payment due taxes is a program to kind of capture part of that $1.2 million in tax revenue. But again, that's totally voluntary and basically on the whim of those tax-exempt properties that benefit from municipal services but do not pay taxes. So it's kind of a way to offset, you know, the services that they benefit from but don't necessarily pay to them.
Can I wait till the end to ask the question regarding that or do I ask now?
I do ask it, I'll wait till the end.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, I have questions, I mean, I just was wondering, has, I mean, I read it. It's a pilot program. But do you have any statistic numbers to prove that it has worked in other communities that suffer like Nega? Do you have statistics on that?
I will have the answer, go back to that and answer for it.
Thank you.
Another avenue that we are looking is to propose a block party application fee. In the municipality, there is currently no fee for block parties, although it does take some administrative work to oversee the whole processing of the application. When someone submits an application for block party, it has to be signed off by a municipal administrator, the chief of police, the public works director, and the fire chief. And, you know, calculating it all out, in 2018, the cost for reviewing and making the decision on the block party application is about $96. So whether or not that application is denied or approved, municipality spends about $96 processing that application. So what we will be recommending to council is a cost fees of $50 per application, non-fundamental, just to kind of capture and offset that cost. In terms of public works, they are increasing some permit fees for street openings, going from $60 to $174. In terms of utility pole permits, from $60 per application to $100, with the cost of each pole going from $5 to $20. And then a permit fee for street hanging street banners. Currently, public works does not charge any fee for hanging banners across streets, where, you know, it does cost time and energy and wage to put those banners up. So what our public works department has proposed is a $100 fee to put them up and take them down for organizations in town that want to hang banners and banners on across the street. Other fees that have not been charged that we will be looking into actively charging and collecting the fees for, including contractor parking permits, loading zone signs, private waste collection registration fees, and annual waste haul licenses. And that is for private waste haulers that are primarily for commercial districts. And the waste hauler fee is based on the number of trucks ranging from $15 to $100. Planning development is recommending that they institute a fee for murals with single-family residents, multifamily residents, and commercial properties be challenging to receive in terms of submitting application for conditional use for murals. And the fees are retroactive there. In terms of our fire department, they are looking at capturing operational permits in terms of inspections and permitting that they do on an annual basis. Examples would be garagees, businesses that use renewable combustible liquids, hazardous materials, and whatnot. And I believe they're also looking at a couple of other things, but primarily operational permits for operating in town that might pose fire risk, that require fire to go out and inspect and ensure the public's safety. Code enforcement, they are recommending some pricing for their building permits. What our code enforcement under the direction of our new code manager, Amber Ducey, has noticed is a lot of the building permits are coming in undervalued. So essentially, the current process is we collect a current fee of $70 minimum, and then, you know, based on valuation of the project, it's a percentage of the total repairs or development that is undertaken. What he's proposing in terms of new development, in terms of new residential and commercial projects, that they change the fee from $70 to $100, with no change to the valuation, so it will still be a percentage of the overall cost, and then just updating the state-mandated UCC permit fee, again, from $4 to $4.50. Code is recommending that a different pricing be applicable for current properties that are undergoing, residential properties that are undergoing repair or modifications. Rather than being an evaluation of the overall project, he's recommending that the fee go from $70 minimum to $100 minimum, with a $75 fee per inspection after that initial inspection. So if you're updating your house and you only need one inspection, you pay $100. If you do multiple inspections, you pay that $100 minimum plus the 75 times however many inspections you need. And that's a way of capturing additional revenue and potentially saving homeowners the cost of having to pay a percentage of the total cost to just how many inspections you need. They are also recommending changes to their annual contract license prices, pricing. Currently, they have a two-tiered structure fee, and they would like to move that to a quarter fee. So instead of being here whether before February or after February, they break it down by quarters. So first quarter, contractor comes in to get licensed, they get $100. They have to pay $100 to get licensed. And, you know, we come in April 1st, $75, and so on. With the intention being that, given the quarterly structure of fees, that contractors are more likely to come in and get, pay their license. He's also recommending changes to rental license pricing, going from $65 per unit to $75 per unit. $5 increase in penalty fee, and increasing the no show or no entry fee from $30 to $100. And again, that is to kind of motivate the property owners to let our inspectors in. Currently, if our inspector goes in to inspect, and they are not allowed entry for whether they're not home or for whatever reason, they get charged $30. With this proposed fee, if our inspector goes out for an inspection of a rented property and they cannot get in for whatever reason, they will be charged $100. And then the planned fee fees per hour will increase by $5 for residential plans and by $15 for commercial plans. Recreation, recreation wants to take a new approach to their park permits. Currently, our park permits are based on the number of people that are going to be using a park. What we've found is that, you know, essentially, anyone who wants a permit that's under 20 people, they get the permit, they don't pay anything. What we've found is as soon as we tell the people that the number of 19 people permits have increased. So what we are proposing is just a fee structure based on the number of hours used. So if someone wants to use a park permit for one to four hours, residents are paying $85 with a $25 deposit, which will be refunded based on the upkeep of the grounds after the party, with non-residents having an increased rate. If residents want to use the park for five to eight hours, residents have one fee, non-residents have another, which are increased. And we maintain the park ability fee at $100, so there's a change there. Couple additional recommendations that recreation has proposed is that any rental that constitutes an event is required to have a police presence. And the recreation manager will define what event constitutes with the average of over 100 people. So if you're going to have over 100 people at a park, it would qualify as an event and need some police presence of some sort, which would mostly be for to ensure the safety of everyone and just to guarantee that everything goes fine and be there if needed. And also, if any organization is not using the park for paid programming, they would be charged a penalty rate, which would be double the maximum fee. So if a private organization or some group is using the parks for paid programming, they would get a violation fee. As I stated earlier, our recreation center is currently under renovation. So the recreation in terms of being proactive, in terms of using our rec center, has proposed a couple of renter fees. Again, this is based on the hourly rates of which the park permit system that they are proposing, with a gymnasium pricing categories 24 hours, five to eight hours, with different fee rates for residents, non-residents, for private organizations and non-profit organizations. And there are also a couple of classrooms and multi-purpose rooms, which again, you know, break down by hours, and they have four different grades for residents, non-residents, and different types of organizations. And again, once the renovations are complete, it is our opportunity to institute these fees for rental of those spaces by any of those organizations or individuals. With the 10 dollars per person, because they are working on getting computers at the rec center and having, you know, some kind of technical assistance should they be needed. This is a little bit of history on our fund balance. Our fund balance is basically the municipality's savings account. Earlier this year, we entered into work with the National Resource Network, which is conducting a financial assessment of the municipality. And these are their figures based on our financials. So as of 2018, our savings account fund balance is at 7.8. And this is their projection up to 2023 with the rent being deficits. And again, our debt service is currently at $4 million. And, you know, as the years go on, we get more and more debt service, so it keeps, there's always plenty of us, so it kind of helps us out in terms of the deficit. So tonight, and with this budget, there are three options available for council to choose at their pleasure. Option one is no mileage increase. So mileage remains 14.7. We would not see any increase in revenue. And we would have to use the total debt, we would have to use reserves for the total deficit, which again, I stated earlier, was about $1.7 million. So our spending is exceeding our broker bringing in by $1.7 million. And after that, given that we provided some info on the fund balance, if we were to use that $1.7 million reserve, we would have a $6.1 million fund balance with no immediate impact on property owners. Option two is a .5 mil increase, which would increase the mileage to 15.2. Increase revenue would be about $400,000. We select to use 1.3 million for reserves, and fund balance will be 6.5 million. The average impact on property owners would be $44 for the entire year to the state taxes. And that is all based on the average property assessment of $88,837.97, which is a calculation done by the county. So they give us a total assessment, and we bring it down to the average assessed property value. Option three is a one mil increase. Would actually increase the mileage for Norristown to 15.7. It would generate an additional $800,000. We would then need to use $900,000 for our reserves, and with the fund balance totaling about $6.9 million after the budget. What that means in terms of the average impact on property owners is about an $88.84 total increase in the annual rece tax. And just for your information, mill trade for the surrounding town shares that are part of the Norristown area's food district, East Norton, West Norton, Montgomery County, and Norristown, both last year and what is anticipated for this year, the value of a single mill varies. In terms of Norristown last year, our value of the mill was $879,000. Unfortunately, we see that value of a single mill decreasing for next year based on the county's assessment to $875,000. And again, East Norton and West Norton, their value is over $90,000. So just to give some perspective in terms of what the savings is in terms of the entire community. And with that, after today, the next step will be the special council meeting tonight at 6:00 P.M. There will be no action. Tonight, council will be presented with its full budget. They will provide their feedback. Residents will also be able to provide their feedback tonight. The council provides theirs. And following that, starting tomorrow, February, excuse me, November 30th, the full presentation and budget will be available online and hard copies at Municipal Hall, online, and at the library. Followed by 10-day public commentary period, where anyone in the community is welcome to provide their comments and their thoughts on the budget, either by sending a letter, submitting an request to call, giving us a call, visiting our website, or emailing info@norristown.org. And then after that, advertise, the motion to advertise will be presented on December 10th with a potential adoption of the proposed budget on December 18th. And with that, I open it up to public comment and any questions.
Can you go back to pilot analysis?
Yes, ma'am.
What has this worked in other communities is what I'd like to know. I mean, is this, because you're expecting, basically, it's like a GoFund for nonprofits to help communities out that have overburdened, you know... out that have overburdened, you know, taxable parcels. So what I'm asking you is, this program that you're hoping will help us, has it succeeded in other communities, and like, what's the percentage of income that they have recouped?
I don't have the exact percentage of what has been regrouped, but I know that a lot of communities have large nonprofit presence, specifically in terms of college towns. I know State College, Monroe, Homewood, and State, they have a pilot program within University of North Carolina, as well as does Rad and Tatcham.
Okay, any local ones, like Phoenixville, Podstown, that has a high percentage of, you know, Section Eight properties and things like that, that would mimic North Town's structure, are they running this pilot program?
I believe Westchester does do that, but Westchester.
And what's the percentage that they've been able to regroup with their total, non-taxable totals, how much in last year were they able to regroup that in this pilot program?
I do not have that number right now, but I can hand it to you.
Um, can we go then now to couples, it's hard for me to see this, but regarding, it's something to do with utility poles and things like that?
Yes.
All righty. Um, what are you referring to with fees on utility poles, that's what I'd like to know?
So my understanding is whenever Pico or the electric company or telephone, whenever telephone pole goes into the ground, they have to get a permit. And based on the number of poles, they have to pay, based on the number of poles. So that's essentially what that is. So whenever a utility company has to put something into the ground, they have to get a permit, and they increase that.
Are poles up to date with markings to identify who owns these poles, because there's been feedback and talk about problems with some poles leaning over, wires falling, and nobody seems to give a clear understanding whose pole it is, causing defect to the homeowner's frustration on trying to track down how to get the wires back up? So that's my only question, is that are we up to date with identifying all the poles in North Town?
I believe that Public Works does have a point list of who owns what poles, but I will happily inform Public Works Director that that is occurring and to double check all its records.
Okay. Um, my other one is code enforcement. When you were referring to the increase of a hundred dollars if they can't get in and stuff like that, okay, when you're referring to the residents, are resident homeowners required to have their properties inspected?
This, that fee is just for rental license, for rental.
All right, so that all has to do with landlord tenant properties, correct?
Yes, rental properties have to be inspected.
So what if a homeowner has just rehabbed their property and has requested to have the property inspected, thus the municipality could buy that service for a fee?
I believe that would be part of the building permit, which would be this recommendation that we have right there, if it's a modification, you know, rehabbing their property, instead of doing, charging them a percentage of their overall cost, Code would only charge them per the number of sections. So if they would need one inspection, they would just be one hundred dollars. If they need multiple inspections, it would be one hundred dollars plus seventy-five dollars per inspection, so we don't charge them more than what's necessary.
Okay, well, I'm just wondering, because like, not everybody comes down to get a per, not even everybody knows that you have to come here and ask for a permit just to even replace a heater. So what if a homeowner replaces the heater and then realizes, oh, I better have this checked? Is there any penalty fees on that, or do you just charge then the inspection fee?
I assume that they wouldn't just automatically charge them. I know that Seth Theiride, or our Code Manager, one of his priorities is public outreach in terms of letting residents know when you need a permit, when you don't need a permit, and be understandable with situations like that.
Right, okay. The PATH Center. Are we offering a, since we're now a Rec Center, similar to Plymouth Community Center and the Y and all these other places, are we offering any type of yearly membership to residents and non-residents on a yearly basis instead of an hourly basis, so that they can go in and use the center freely like they do at Plymouth and Y and all that?
And I will, I will, right manager is here today, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but as of now, I do not believe that there is any type of intention to a yearly membership.
So basically, it's just like a banquet hall and you're renting it for hours?
Unless there's a program there, you pay for the program, you are paid for part of that program.
But if you were a resident, you just wanted to go run around the track because it's raining outside and you've got a clear space in there to walk around, it would still be charged to the resident as an hourly rate than just using the facility as a Rec Center that it's supposed to be?
On this chart, you want to count all that?
If we'll have to set aside times for open gym, which we need to comment, there will be times, we didn't even go over a technical membership yet, and how we're gonna work with that, but there will be open gym times, there will be free classes and programming available to the community that doesn't require members. So if there's pickup basketball for adults between six and eight P M., come in, you know, if you're a residency, that's the movement and direction that we're looking in as of right now. If we grow large enough, fast enough, a membership, an annual membership will look into it. But to start out, we're gonna do a lot of programming, there's things to do there, and if it's an open time, we'll post times.
Yeah, but my question is, is that, you know, being that we have a lot of seniors that would like to just have some facility locally that they can walk to during off-climate weathers like now in the wintertime, just to walk around, your morning time, I don't foresee when kids are in school having tournaments, basketball rentals at an early morning time, so that's why I'm just trying to find out. A lot of people have been going down, I'm one, I pay for an outside membership because I need something.
Absolutely.
So that's what I'm saying, do you have an estimated timeframe when you might see something like that coming into the municipality, since we've owned the building almost a year now?
I'm gonna go out and probably say, you know, spring, summer, nineteen, next year, once everything's finished, we have all the policies perceived, risk management, all of that same stuff in there, but to move to somewhere where people need to go is an absolute goal, yeah.
Okay. Um. I wasn't real clear on your description on the parks as far as, you know, like, say, somebody's got a kid and I'm going out to the park to the pit with six or seven kids to have a little birthday party, they're gonna have to file a permit to get clearance to do that?
Only if you want to reserve that park. Residents can go down to the park at any time and enjoy it, and if you want to reserve a dedicated space, say, if anyone wants to use the pavilion during summertime. So if you want to reserve a spot, or reserve a specific section of the park, you do leave it open. But if you just wanna go and take the kids and have a birthday party, that's, you can run and walk with them, you might have to do a permit. It's only if you want to reserve a dedicated space.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying, like, usually, so, once you've designated a permit for use, like, are they using the whole entire, like, say, I get they're gonna use the pit, okay, and then there's all these tables around the pit, so, like, but like, say, I'm gonna be over by the ban shell or something like that, are you gonna be able to mark those locations so that people know that's permitted for a special party, you can't use it? Because like I said, I have yet to see, you know, I've seen conflict, but I haven't seen, like, this, okay, the permit was issued and that the municipality put out tags saying this is for, you know, special event?
I believe one of the proposals in the Recreation Budget is to demarcate those specific areas, because we did notice that there have been conflicts with people trying to use the same space.
Exactly. Um, is that for all parks within the municipality, including the Riverfront?
In terms of our permits, yes, but again, you know, we'll demarcate those large parks like Homewood, there's a lot of space in Homewood, so we'll mark different spots reserved for different people.
Okay, so what I would also like to know right now is, the ten million loan that we took out for the capital project improvements, at what point, how much do we have left of that ten million?
I don't have any of those numbers in terms of this budget, this is just operational. That is capital improvement project money that is managed by our finance department, but I do have, I know the administration does have those numbers available, and you know, after we did, I will share the numbers with you.
Okay, I can get a printout of that?
I don't know if there's, if I have a readily available copy of that.
All right, so can I submit a right to know to get a copy of that?
I wouldn't see why not for the capital improvement.
Or is that something else that has to be approved by council to release?
No, 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 that's my head to document, it's public dollars.
All right, so right now, I'd like to know, since you said that we are four million in debt as of now with this budget?
Then that's pre-existing, that's not just because of this budget, that's.
I understand that, but I'm saying, what were we at at last year's budget?
The budget payments are all pretty much the same. There has been no increase in terms of.
Now, you said our debt services were four million.
Yes, there is actually about four point two million, and there is no change, that's consistent, no increase in terms of.
So we've never tried to, because like I said, over the years, we've discussed about a five-year plan to reduce our debt services, okay, so that we're operating on what, you know, we bring in. So that's why I'm asking, so we're just continually now still riding at four million debt, right?
Current, yes.
And the seven point eight million, I didn't quite, I just wrote down seven point eight million, what was the seven point eight million spending?
That is our savings account, that's our fund balance.
So we have seven point eight million dollars right now to operate with?
That's not part of the operation of our budget, that's just.
A fund, okay, so the fund balance, okay, so. Um, and what is the one point seven million, what were those numbers for?
The one point seven is the anticipated deficit, so that is.
So that's the increase that we're anticipating?
That is, the increase is five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, six hundred and fifty-five, increase from last year.
Okay, and is there any way that I can find out the breakdown of what departments caused that increase and what it was spent on?
Okay, right, the increase in.
I can't see the overhead, so you're gonna have to help me out here. I asked for a document to follow by, so you're gonna have to come and help me out here, because these are things I'd like to know, like, what was, where was the heaviness, what was the spending done on, and all that?
Absolutely. I'll answer this, then we will let other people ask.
Thank you.
So in terms of the, excuse me, in terms of the five hundred thousand dollar increase, two hundred and seventy thousand is personnel increases, personnel costs.
Personnel costs, so can you give me any examples of what would have been personnel costs?
Just mandatory two point five percent increase in union salaries in terms of lease, fire, public works, laborers.
So, yeah, raises, things like that, okay?
Yeah, and as you can see, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars are contractual salary increases. So out of that, two hundred and seventy, one hundred and fifty-eight are mandatory based on contract.
So that was last year?
No, this is going into.
That's what I'm.
Yes, that's contributing to that five hundred thousand.
So when you say mandatory increases, so they're by contracts?
Yes.
Okay, so by the contract, I get you have to increase, but what is the average, are all employees getting increases, and what's the average, like, is it a cost of living three percent, or is it, do you have a grid, how does the municipality operate when getting out raises, is it merit, or do they come in and you have a five-year grid and then they not say, I wanna know the details of that?
Mary, can you speak to our.
Well, basically, like you said, contractuals are pure by.
Right, contracts.
Contracts, and then there are some just general.
I think it's a two point five.
Yeah, definitely, it's definitely like a two point five. You said three percent, and we really didn't imagine.
My last question to you is, is what was the lowering by council's spending?
Tell me that. The two thousand dollar decrease is a salary that went to the secretary of council, so that's decreased by two thousand.
So they have no more secretary?
My understanding is that they will be utilizing a paid staff member to be taking the increase.
Okay, and has there been any increase done for their budget spending?
In terms of council?
Yeah, last year it was five thousand, is that increased, or is it still at five thousand?
That is, there's no difference. The only change to council is that two thousand dollar difference.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem. Anyone else, Mr. Wallace?
All right, I, I didn't notice it this time, because I was thinking about some other things, but there was an assessment reduction because of appeals, it was, what, one point seven?
Yes. Yes, the overall assessment went down.
Right.
And ultimately?
I think it was one million, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Ultimately, whenever, you know, the county does their annual assessment, and in terms of real estate property taxes, their decrease in the assessment produced our income from property taxes by sixty-two thousand dollars.
Well, what I would like to note, and I've been chasing this for a while, the fact is, is that when the real estate people go in and are able to get an assessment reduction, that transfers the expense to the homeowners, and I figured out almost two million dollars worth of assessment appeals, that there would be a list of those people that got those appeals. I would like that list, if that's possible. The other thing that I'd like to comment on has to do with your permits for pole replacement. I believe it's extremely important that you stipulate a timeframe for completion, because there's stuff all over the place where Pico put the pole in, and they have not contracted, contacted the other companies that are attached to the half poles that are laying there, broken, tied up with rope, et cetera, et cetera. I believe there needs to be a timeframe of, say, six months, that the responsible people are responsible for getting this taken care of, and what I believe, that will minimize power outages that I've been a crusader against for quite a while. The other issues that I would like to request funding for have to do with, I see the increase of fifty-six thousand dollars for parks and recreation, and what I'm asking for is the allotment for Riverfront Park, carrying along with the project of the cleanup of twenty-seventeen. You can see I have the T-shirt on, and it's up on YouTube, I think pretty much everybody saw it, but I'd like everyone to understand the importance of cleaning up the Riverfront from the bridge over to the island up to Buttonwood Street as part of a public safety issue, which has to do with accessing the river water for fire safety there on Buttonwood Street, and that also it would double for more enhancement of recreation involving around the river, dragon boats, also I introduced the triathlon with the possibility we could bring that through economic development. The other issue is. The other issue was exposed last year had to do with river safety with respect to the invasive weeds that had threatened things. The report from the Valley Forge Watershed stated that we have pretty much eradicated the weeds. There are spots that need maintenance and so on and so forth. And that there was no contribution from Norristown towards funding the purchase of a harvester. And we were hoping that possibly you could include in your Parks and Recreation a little bit of funding, basically because you do have a public grant, you do give access to the public, and the whole idea is to protect the public from this invasive stuff. Which also has to do with, basically, the funding of the harvester and the maintenance of it, so on and so forth. I believe you guys had the details specifically with previous when we purchased it for 80, 85,000 dollars. The other concern has never been brought to you folks before. I organized all the river rescue, fire departments. And what it has to do with is the condition of a shoal, which we will call Catfish Shoal, which was a dam, Catfish Dam that was upstream removed for the coal, coal silt removal. That has presented a danger because the Fish Commission, the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission, is not maintaining navigational buoys. As part of the watershed's river safety, river rescue, I was in charge of developing a plan and getting the design for a safe channel markings, which included showing where the rocks were and where the channel is. It's kind of convoluted, if you're familiar with it. But the fact that the Fish Commission is not maintaining that not only puts, you know, the citizens at risk, but it also affects the potential of being able to do river rescue up in the Valley Forge Park area, Bestwood Bridge, et cetera, et cetera. The watershed sent requests to the Fish Commission for placement of the buoys of the approved by the four fire department river rescues and which was denied. It was submitted twice, denied twice, and all that information was taken to Senator Rafferty who was working with their liaison to find out what the story is. One of the letters that came back from the Fish Commission stated that they, somebody already had a contract for marking the channel, but nobody's been marking the channel. So one of our requests was a copy of the contract so that we could see what actually was supposed to be considered safe. I mean, I designed a totally safe area where we've got the Rock Shoal buoys all the way across before and after, I mean, leave nothing to chance, absolutely nothing to chance. But with the mere fact that Senator Rafferty did not win the election, that kind of knocks me back to square one unless for some reason I do get some information back from their department, from the Senator's office. There had been verbal communication with Legislative Assistant Travis that communication had gone back and forth. But I have stopped in the office a couple of times and was then able to gather that information. So we may have more. But the bottom line is the Norristown Dam pool that the Valley Forge Watershed is concerned with has 28 elected officials that are directly responsible for it. Senator Rafferty was the one that was most conducive to it. And what I would do is also, the next senator I will make aware of the issues. I don't expect too much, but what I figured I would move it on to Representative Briggs. Now, if anyone had seen the news the other day, he's proposing a bill to ban styrofoam. And we had a press release out there on the dam at the Fish Ladder in Bridgeport. I do have that, if need be, I can email that to some of you guys, the news broadcast. But, you know, the fact is, is that I figured he is the one that's most concerned because his reason for spanning, for banning the styrofoam is, you know, river stopping pollution, so on and so forth. So the other point, which is a positive upside of some of this, is the Scrucal Greenway grants, they just put out close 400,000 dollars worth of grants. And what, I was just on the phone this morning to Tim, well, I left him a voicemail, is that there are stream bank stabilization grants that I would like to make sure that we can do something with our riverbank, the Norristown Riverbank. So engaging them through the watershed, gathering the information and then being able to work, you know, with you folks would be the plan. The other thing is the Fish Ladder. For approximately 10 years, maybe 11, the Stony Creek Anglers have not been able to gain access to the Fish Ladder. The Fish Ladder was put in by Exelon to allow for the migration of shad, which according to the river keeper at Chery Town is worth 30 million dollars worth of economic development because of shads. I've heard stories about how it does in other areas. So the idea that we have some economic development that goes along with that to enhance the Norristown Dam pool, which basically the key is Riverfront Park. DCNR also has grants that may be able to address the mud condition at Riverfront Park. And also the erosion from Stony Creek into the park which created that pollution peninsula that hampers the lower side of the Norristown side of Barbados Island being able to be utilized. And actually, to be truthful with you, what was in the paper about the 41-inch muskie that was caught, we met the gentleman, it was actually caught below all that pollution. It's almost completely choked off the Norristown side. And when that pollution choking off the Norristown side allows for buildup of sediment that comes with the muddy water every time it rains. Hopefully, your MS4 regulations, you know, will take care of that. That's pretty much it. You know, we're concerned about the river, we want to see Riverfront Park improved so that it's now it's a diamond in the rough, but I remember what it was when it had sandy beaches when they, when they got rid of the coal silt. But that's where my heart is.
Thank you.
Speaking of the river, under the beautiful projects, has there been any efforts or any designs put out yet to allow it to be handicap accessible? Because the pavement's crumbling from Paul's Avenue and it's just too much to be carting people from the Lafayette Street corridor parking lot at Lafayette and Swig down to the park. So it's not accessible for handicapped?
I know, I, you know.
So is there, is there plans on, in the budget to rehab accessibility for the river?
That would be part of the capital project, since it's a capital project in terms of parking permits, which is a category in terms of the capital improvement overall plan. So we have to check with that. But I know the Riverfront Park, especially after you highlighted those deteriorating conditions down there, has been a focus of what.
Good, I'm glad, because like I said, that event would have been really something special if more people had access to it.
Agreed.
My other question to you is, is there anything in this budget that indicates the spending of legal services and what the increase was last year? And where does that fall under, administration?
No, that falls under its own category of law. And in terms of spending from last year to this year, there is no increase whatsoever.
So if we lost a law, a major lawsuit that was pending with us, when would we see the effect of that cost? And does that come out of our funds or does that come out of an insurance policy?
I would imagine in the insurance, I would imagine that would be assigned, but I can't really speak to it because.
I can't see the overhead. What was the spending on law this last year?
Law this last year was 392,500 dollars, and that is the same.
Same, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
First of all, you said you have another meeting tonight at 6?
Yes, ma'am, we will be presenting the full budget to municipal council. We will be getting council's feedback and in terms of everything we shared with you. And after they provide their feedback, we will be opening up the public conference.
Okay, my question is that the new properties, any of the new properties that are being built around here in Norristown, they have the new, they have like a tax abatement. I understand that they don't pay any taxes for the next 10 years.
Are you referring to the other program?
The what program?
The. Do you know which property you're speaking to?
Yeah, the, like, the Arbor, the new Arbor Court, like, all these new.
Arbor use.
All these new developments that are building, I understand they're under tax abatement where they don't have to pay taxes for the next 10 years.
That's actually not accurate. The Arbor use, the residential properties that are going on and out, they don't have any abatement. They don't have any kind of tax abatement, to best my knowledge.
They got a learner, didn't they?
The Arbor use, Arborides, the Luxor, Luxury Conominations on Sandy Street, the second property to have a learner. The way the learner works is that they do continue paying taxes. It's, they just continue paying what the tax value was at that property. And then they increase the taxes over a 10-year period. So they don't, we still continue to collect taxes, they still pay taxes. It's just the increase in their taxes is gradual as opposed to all at once, based on improving the property. So when they improve the property, the assessment for that property will go up. But instead of paying the full amount of that increase, they pay a percentage every year until they pay the full amount of that increase. No, this is just the developer. Yes, ma'am, the developer pays a 10% increase every single year. So they pay 10% of that increase, 20% of that increase, until 10 years they're paying the full amount of that increase. So they do continue paying taxes.
Also, that they're not paying, because it's tax abatement, that they do not have to pay taxes.
They don't pay any increase. The increase is gradual. They continue paying the same amount of taxes that they, that property is always paying. It's just if the learner process, and I'll have to explain that tense after the meeting, is if developer wants to develop a property, they get the approval of the three taxing bodies, the resound accounting, the school district. They continue paying taxes, the same taxes that they did. It's just an increase in taxes, because if you improve the property, you're gonna get, you're gonna have to pay no taxes. It's just increase over a 10, 10-year period, 10 years.
Can I play with some numbers with that to understand it?
If you want, we can talk, we have another problem.
The property pays 100,000 dollars, is worth 100,000 dollars. The taxes on that are X amount of dollars.
Yes, sir.
They put 100,000 dollars into it, which means the property is worth 200,000 dollars. The year after they complete that, they pay the taxes the same as it was, 100,000 dollars. The following year, they pay 100,000 and 10,000.
100,000, plus that 10%.
Then the second year, they pay 100,000 and 20,000.
Until year 10.
Until year 10 where they pay on the 200,000. Okay, I got it, I got it.
So, yeah, they still pay taxes, it's just increases over a 10-year period.
So there's no tax loss from what exists?
Yes, there's no tax loss. The only thing is we just have to wait.
There's no tax abatement?
The tax abatement is on the increase, on the increase, not the full amount.
The improvement?
Yeah, on the improvement, thank you. We don't lose taxes, we just have to pay them a little bit longer to get the.
To get them. Where would I find when they're the collection of past tax debt?
Past tax debt?
Meaning we have a lot of properties that are in the rear for tax, not paying their taxes. Lot of liens. What have we regrouped in the last year on lien property tax that's not been paid to the municipality? I know there's a word for it, but my brain's not working right now.
I can't figure it out. I'm trying to bring it up, but I scroll along.
I can get that, because we do have, yeah, we do have a category of delinquent taxes. Somebody does owe to the.
The only one, that's what.
Yeah, but it is, I can get it.
Well, has the delinquency decreased over the years? Or is it still riding around?
Not the delinquency, the collection of those has increased over the years because we have, we utilize our port on law.
Right.
To go after those.
But we've increased the aggressiveness, have we decreased the debt?
Yes, yes. Porter Law Services is a service that we hire and they have a very good, a very successful rate of getting the money back to us.
Okay, great, thank you. And who is the company?
It's Portnoy.
Portnoy?
Yes, Portnoy Office, it's very near Norristown.
Give us another, oh, go ahead.
And a follow-up question, we have to pay taxes for all, like, all surrounding residents in the area, 20,000, 30,000, record, and we have to pay taxes?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to go to the school district, so we don't collect for that.
The school district.
Yeah, we don't collect for that, so they would have to.
My question is, because, you know, every year, the property school taxes are increasing, which is why the school taxes are increasing. But I understand that the court, I saw the CIO, when it sold this, when it sold it, I understand is that she claims that you're not getting education funding to get a lot of schools that they get title and funding about 1,000%. So I also bear down that, for those reasons, that's the reason why the pop art school taxes, the school tax increase, my first name increases. From what I understand, if my evidence, I think the area are paying taxes, paying the taxes, I just need to know, like, is there any protection people are not paying the school taxes?
We don't have, we don't have any of the school financials. We don't collect for that, so I'm sorry, but you have to ask the school district for that information.
That would be those questions.
Yeah, you have to tell your questions to the school, or you don't collect for the school district. And we don't get any funding personally.
Would you, would you assure surrounding residents in the area are paying or sharing taxes?
That would be a school district question, since they collect that. We don't collect that. We do collect earned income, we do collect business, personal, state tax.
Are we, how are we aggressively getting the earned income tax? Because we have transient, because of the 7,000 rental units, these are considered transient. How do we assure ourselves that we're collecting the information of who's living here in Norristown so that we can charge them in earned income tax? Are we being provided the slips, the copy slips of every child that's being registered into our school district? Is the school district providing us that copy so that we can collect our earned income tax? Because back when I worked with the school district, we weren't collecting them.
No, Berkhimer is an agency that collects all EITs and then they divvy it out to the different.
I know who Berkhimer is, yes.
Okay.
But I'm asking you, are we aggressively following through with that? Because Berkhimer has not been doing their jobs. I mean, let's go back to some records here in Norristown. They gave us false information one year that we were gonna be having collection revenue of 3. million dollars and they felt short 8 million. So I'm asking. So I'm asking, is there anybody here that can prove that we are collecting earned income tax from every working human being in Norristown? Yes, is there proof?
I can't see a full, what the collection has been happening.
But we hire Berkhimer, we should have that information under the right to know because that's a contract that we're paying for. And this is one of the citizens' concerns, are we collecting it equally across the board with every living human being in Norristown that has a job? Because it is on our administrative code records that businesses in Norristown are mandated to subtract that from paychecks. And the only one that was taxed except from that was the United States Postal Service. So anybody else that works here in Norristown, it's automatically taken out of their paycheck. But if they're not working for a Norristown business, the ones that work outside in Plymouth, East Norton, you know, everywhere else, how do we prove that they are paying earned income tax less?
With the EIT was in your car, you know, we haven't shared it.
They're in Bridgeport, so would I be able to walk over there and submit a right to know to get those calculations?
So that's, they're not a public entity? I'm not sure.
So as my municipality, would I be able to get those detailed numbers submitting it under the right to know since you're paying Berkhimer to collect this data?
Yeah, we have to go into details, but that's something I would definitely share with the administrator as well as our finance director for Starks this week.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Definitely, you know, concerns like that, we would definitely share it. Not only with fellow staff, but also council. One last question, Mr. Walters.
Were you done?
Yeah.
I wanted to comment on the increase in taxes. That over a million dollars that the real estate people were able to drive down their assessment is what gets transferred to ours. When real estate people go in and they talk about property values dropping, they go into a county department called Assessment Appeals. And what they're able to do is drive their tax down, which pushes yours and East and West Orange up. That's the way it works. So have you ever heard of the Bureau of Tax Appeal?
Excuse me, Mr. Walters, do you have any questions or comments?
Okay, I'll talk through it.
Okay, with that, we are concluding this public hearing. Thank you once again for coming and providing your feedback and concerns and we'll share them.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
We're just public servants here doing our job. So there is another meeting tonight at 6:00 where the public will once again have a period to comment after once council comment.
Comment, oh, comment, oh. Are you kidding me? No, just comment, oh.
We'll be commenting. And after tonight's meetings, tomorrow the full presentation will be available with a 10-day window for the public to submit their comments and ask questions about the budget, whether it's in person, online, over the phone, or in writing.